All right, so we have quorum. Mr. Smith will not be joining us?
Correct.
I thought so. So I will call the March 14th Planning Commission meeting to order at 7:01. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda or any amendments there?
You have it.
Second.
All right, Mr. Dana with the motion.
Shanny.
Rosenberg with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Mr. Chair, would you mind just?
I can't stand to hear my own voice. All right, I will accept the motion to approve the minutes from February 14th, which are in the packet. Any additions, corrections, changes to the minutes?
Well, say yes.
All right, so a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Dana with the motion? You have a second?
Second.
Dr. Prithrich with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, it passes. Item number four, public comments related to items that are not on the agenda. So if anybody from the public would like to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda, feel free to come up to the podium. Seeing no motion, we will assume that everyone is well with that. Reports from commissions, boards, committees and staff. Mr. Dana, will you report on your committees?
Well, in the first place, Mr. Koppinger and all the members of CIC celebrated the opening of the Fisher College of Innovation and Entrepreneurship on Elm. That was the first thing. And one of the things that they are doing and that David and that Mr. Krupfiger are doing is design, creative placemaking is what it's called. And so that is occurring under his powerful watch. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rosenberg?
Yeah, so Housing Advisory Commission was canceled last month. But Sam, did you report on Neighborhood Housing Services last month? I forget.
Just that there was a contract.
Okay, yeah. So that's all I was going to report. You had updated us after the meeting had been canceled. So Neighborhood Housing Services will be the nonprofit that helps with housing stuff in the city of Oxford. So that's amazing that that's moving forward.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Blodner?
We didn't meet this month, so for the Oxford Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, it was last month that we covered it, I think. So, nothing to report.
Perfect. Dr. Prithrich?
And I'll do, I'll report from council because again, we don't always know if you're in the planning commission, what happens with things. Some of the action on council related to planning. The two subdivision, I guess, PUD on Lake Forest Drive were given another six-month extension. As you may know, that we went through all that conversation about them, but there's no easy gravity-fed sanitary sewer service to those subdivisions. And so they're kind of like on hold pending some major investment in new sewer lines. So they're being extended, but they don't really have any pathway to development barring some major investment. There may be a conversation about TIP districts with people before council, but. And the other one was Owl's Landing. That moved ahead as a PUD, but there's, then the lots need to be subdivided. A portion of them have been approved. We went through the second reading, I'm going to lose track on things. So that's moving ahead with construction and subdivision. There was a question about renaming some of the streets. I think it was concerned about one of them primarily, Screech Avenue or Screech Street. But I think that there'll be some similarly bird name thing that, yeah, that was approved through, but I think somebody had second thoughts about that and proposed something, some alternative. So those things are moving forward. And then the only other thing is just a heads up. I mean, I've been talking about this for a while, but a clockwork, the city Climate Action Steering Committee is developing a climate action plan. Many of the goals of that were woven into the Oxford Tomorrow Plan, but there are more detailed goals and objectives. So there's going to be a public kind of presentation input session on the climate action plan. I think it's Thursday, October 6th, at the Senior Center. You know, obviously, the planning commission is going to deal with a lot of, you know, if we're going to accomplish some of those implementation items, it'll take the planning commission. So I think staff, rather than put it on our agenda, I think you all will be invited to that to share your thoughts and with that sub work to come.
Thank you.
I was unable to attend the last one, so I haven't.
Well, we didn't have HAPC mostly because of quorum issue, but there were no business items, so it was just perfect. I don't think we have anything new to report. I think council and BZA had approved Ted North Beach. So the only pending physical items we had have just continued to move through the process. Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Watt. Good evening, members of the planning commission. So just wanted to mention that I've had the pleasure of attending the David J. Alor Planning and Zoning Workshop this past Friday with Commissioner Dana. It's a great event and it's been on a brief hiatus since COVID, but it was back this year and was happy to attend. And it's a great event and learned a lot in particular about affordable housing projects. There was one session in particular that stuck with me, developers who kind of specialize in low-income housing tax credits, other sort of subsidies, programs and things of that nature. And so just a couple of fun facts to share with you from that. So the margin of cash flow on affordable projects usually is much, much smaller than that of a market rate project. So because of that, one, funding source can really make or break a particular project. And when it comes to affordable projects, a lot of them are reliant on what's known as soft debt, which is debt that doesn't have to be repaid. So it really, it helps to have a developer who kind of knows what they're doing and knows the various, you know, monies and then funding sources that you can go after to be able to leverage to get projects done. But just a couple of other key points, they were really advocating for, if possible, for the zoning to essentially, the way they summarized it was having it done in time for their arrival on the scene when they're having projects considered. So I think that really underscores and stresses the need for zoning reform in our community to kind of prepare our community for those types of housing to service all of those who are in need of housing. And that covers the whole spectrum of incomes. It's not just low income, it's also moderate income. It's workforce housing, it's everything. So again, really underscores, I think, the need for zoning reform to be pursued, which is also aligned with our recent adopted comprehensive plan rules as well. So I just wanted to mention that, the Alor workshop. So hopefully we'll have it again next year. So if anyone is interested in attending, again, it's a great event. It happens every year. And it also happened to occur this year at my alma mater, University of Cincinnati, College of Design Architecture, Art and Planning, also better known as DAP. So it's nice to have it there this year as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commission members. I just wanted to give a brief update on the OKI ICC meeting, OKI ICC meeting. It's our Regional Council of Governments Metropolitan Planning Organization. There was an interesting presentation on the public engagement that was used for a roundabout that's recently opened in Blue Ash. It's a really large project, $15 million project, took seven years from start to finish. But what they, the engagement piece that I think we could potentially consider in the future used 3D printing and matchbox cars. And then they also did one with golf carts, just to help people get more comfortable with this change. So those, just people are getting more innovative about public engagement because of how social media is influencing decisions. And so that gets more people involved early in the process. The other presentation that I stayed for afterwards last week was on the annual infrastructure grant announcement that opened last week, that'll be due in early June. There's $40 million available and it'll be a very competitive process. So we're not sure yet whether we will apply for any, but that's been one of our major funders that we've partnered with. Not just for trails, but it can be used for other things too, roadway safety, air quality projects, those types of things. So, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right, moving on to new business. PC 2023-02, 20 East Collins Street, conditional use to allow for an accessory dwelling unit in the R3 MS zoning district. Mr. Webb is the applicant agent. Mr. Moore, in a second, you will have the floor because I will accept the motion to adjourn to public session.
Aye.
Mr. Dana with the motion?
Second.
Dr. Prithrich with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing, well, any opposition? I heard five voices. All right, so we are in public session. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So our, I suppose, main case of the evening, this is PC 2023-02, 20 East Collins Street. This is for an accessory dwelling unit. And this happens to be the second request that we have seen for an accessory dwelling unit following the conditional use process since the zoning code was updated to allow such in 2017. And happens to be the same applicant as the first request. This is Scott Webb, architect, who is representing the property owner and property manager for this property. The property owner to mention is William A. Phillips Trust et al. And there's more to that per the auditor's website. The current use is a single-family dwelling. This is somewhat of an unusual dwelling in that normally a single-family dwelling, if it's being established brand-new, normally can only be permitted for up to four unrelated occupants. This one happens to have a grandfathered right for up to five. And this is per a 1999 housing agreement that was entered into between the city and the property owner and is recorded with the county recorder. The lot dimensions involve, so this is a little under 6,000 square feet, 5,940 square feet. The lot width is 72 feet. The current zoning, as Mr. Watt mentioned, is R3 MS, single, two and three family, mile square residential district. And so in order to establish an accessory dwelling unit on this property, the conditional use must be granted. And what the applicant has in mind here is to essentially convert an existing detached garage structure to that accessory unit. Here is a look at the site location shown right here. So it's pretty close to the intersection of East Collins and South Poplar. Here is the western edge of the Miami campus over here, here's 732 and South Main. So this property does not border any public alleyways. It only has frontage along East Collins, right here. And then here is a look at the zoning classifications in the area. So this is, again, the R3 MS, and this is the only zoning, excuse me, zoning district presently that allows for the potential for these accessory dwelling units. There's no other zoning district that allows for them. And that includes the RO district, which is to the north along East Walnut. And then there's a little bit of UP uptown zoning that's just above East Walnut over here. And then the MU or Miami University District, more or less kind of like a holding zone for the university-owned property primarily. And then here's a look at our new comprehensive plan and what it shows in terms of character type classifications. So this is falling within the urban mile square neighborhood character type. Of course, there's the campus character type that's off to the east. And then there is, I believe it's called the urban core character type, which would be up toward uptown, of course. So this character type pretty much describes exactly how it's presently developed. It's a mix of residential uses. It's a pretty well-established dense neighborhood setting. So at least from the use standpoint in terms of an ADU being residential in nature, this could be in a sense found to be in keeping with the surroundings. So looking to the existing land use within the area. So I think this slide pretty well demonstrates that there's quite a mix of uses that are already present within the four-block area or so that's covered by the extent of this map. I'm going to go ahead and move to a full screen mode just to make it a little bit bigger for everyone to see. Basically, so just to kind of walk you through the colors. So two-family is kind of this yellow color. This darker yellow or brownish-yellow is three-family. There's, C just means like a community facility. So there's the Holy Trinity Church and it's the Hillel Foundation that is off to the north, north of the alley that runs east-west. There's some fraternity uses that are along South Campus. And the hashing, if you're wondering what that symbolizes, that basically symbolizes lodging houses. So those are residential land uses that permit more than four unrelated occupants within their structures. And of course, those are, I would believe that pretty much all of those would be per a grandfathered right of some kind, usually a housing agreement. If not a housing agreement, then there's some kind of rental permit that's been grandfathered in since its establishment. So, so again, I think the main point to drive with this particular slide is there's quite a mix already within this setting. Here is a bird's eye view looking northward, identifying the main house that of course sits on the property that was built in 1909, according to the public county auditor's website. So that's right here. And then here is the existing detached garage structure that totals 380 square feet. And that is the structure that is proposed to be basically retrofitted or refurbished into an accessory unit. There is an existing curb cut off of East Collins. So again, given that this lot doesn't have any frontage on either the north-south alley, which is here, or the east-west alley, the only way to have onsite parking of any kind is to have a cut off the main street. And so that's exactly what has been here and likely been here for a very long time, seeing as how this garage was built in 1940, according to the county auditor. And here is another view looking toward the east, again, identifying the main house and then the detached garage. And then this gives you a view of that alley that is not adjacent. And then here are some photos from the street. I believe this is actually a Google street view, if I'm not mistaken. So this gives you a better view. It's a single wide driveway with the cut. And then that leads up, of course, to the garage itself. There is kind of a smaller, what I might call a stoop, deck-like stoop, that is off to the back here and that is in fairly close proximity to the garage structure. So I guess you would consider this kind of like a back door of sorts. This leads into the kitchen in the main house. And then there's a set of stairs with a railing that leads up to the front porch and what would be considered the main entrance into the main dwelling. And then this is actually a closer view. I took this one myself. And so this shows you, there is a definite slope leading up from the public sidewalk here all the way up to where the house sits. And there is a proposal to widen this driveway outward in this fashion. And the reason for that is as an accessory unit, since it's an additional dwelling unit that's being added to the site, staff's interpretation is that you need to provide two onsite or off-street parking spaces associated with that use. But also given that vehicular management is a consideration of the conditional use and normally as we review conditional uses, waivers can be granted. So if the planning commission has a different perspective on that, if we are following with staff's interpretation, if there is a forgiving of that or a waiving of that standard to avoid the driveway expansion, that is a possibility, at least to entertain that procedurally. But as of now, what staff has informed the applicant is that they need to provide expanded parking to accommodate the use. And here is a more direct view of the garage. This, I believe, is from the applicant. So you see that this is a wood frame structure. And I'll show you here in a minute, but essentially the proposal is to make this more dwelling-like in appearance. And that's absolutely critical for our emergency personnel so that they know that it is more, that it embodies more of a dwelling appearance so that they know that it's not being used for some other purpose that's not living space, like for storage, et cetera. So it's not a garage, it's a dwelling, right? So it needs to be improved as such. And there have been plans provided to that effect. Then here is a final view of the property looking from the northwest, showing you a more direct view of the steps and then the walkway with some additional steps that lead up to the front porch. Okay, so this is the site plan that the applicant has submitted. So this gives you a top-down view of the main dwelling at 20 East Collins. There would need to be a new address designated if this accessory unit is approved through the conditional use and the building permit proceeds. At this moment, staff is of the opinion that it should be basically 20 East Collins Unit 1 and 20 East Collins Unit 2 in the rear. But this gives you a view of where a new covered entry would be located. So this would be kind of like a miniature porch of sorts, a segment of the driveway removed in this location. We would want to ensure that the vehicle does not have the ability to impact the structure. And we do have a standard in our code that normally tries to discourage that. And that's to have a three-foot setback, basically, between the driveway and a structure. And one way that that has been, at least the spirit of that has been fulfilled in the past is by having like a raised curb of sorts with at least a three-foot width. And that helps to kind of deter the ability for vehicles to move forward and impact the structure. So this is zooming in a little bit into the site plan. And then here is a look at the floor plan. So the one that is down here for the main unit, this is taken from our existing rental files. And then the one that has been superimposed on top of the accessory dwelling is the one that has been submitted for consideration. So this is the proposed layout within here, and this is an existing layout. And then what this slide does is it tries to break up the various components of each dwelling so you can try to understand what sort of relationship may develop between the two in terms of if there are indeed going to be future occupants within this accessory dwelling, what that relationship might be. So the blue color is indicating bedroom spaces. So the main dwelling has a total of three bedrooms. So it's permitted for five, but in a sense, as it's been communicated, in reality, it's only being rented to three so that way each occupant can have their own bedroom. So in that sense, the proposal may make sense in a way because it's essentially taking two of those occupants and distributing them over to the accessory building that's already there. So there would be two kind of smaller bedrooms within the accessory unit. There would be a little kitchenette, so the red color is denoting kitchen space. And as I understand it, the occupants of this dwelling would have access to the main kitchen. So if there wasn't something they were able to get done in their little kitchenette with the sink and the microwave and mini-fridge under the counter, that they would hopefully have access to the kitchen here. There would be a full bathroom in the unit as well. And our code enforcement officer, who has very much become an expert, shall we say, on the Property Maintenance Code, has reviewed this floor plan and has not found any issues with it, believes that based on the details provided thus far, that this can meet all the Property Maintenance Code requirements in terms of size of living space, kitchen amenities, size of bedrooms. So if this indeed were allowed to proceed to building permit stage and then eventually to rental permit stage, this unit as laid out could be permitted for up to two occupants per Property Maintenance Code. And then finally, I didn't mention, but the orange, as you might have guessed, is the living space between the two units. And then this kind of lighter orange here is sort of common or hallway space for this floor plan. There is a basement, but I believe it's not used as living space presently. And then here is just a close-up of the floor plan that we can refer back to as needed. And then here is an elevation of the accessory structure, saying that there's new siding to match existing. The existing house that's there is a stucco exterior. So we would expect that there would hopefully be some kind of a stucco exterior to match the principal dwelling. But as you can see, the garage door would be eliminated and then there would be a new front door and windows replacing that garage door. So again, giving it a more dwelling-like appearance, which is critical for emergency personnel. Okay, so reaching the recommendation. So staff recommends approval of this conditional use application and we're recommending approval subject to four conditions. The first condition is a waiver to a parking standard. So it's not actually removing the requirement for the two additional spaces, but rather in order to approve the driveway as presented, you would need to waive the standard that allows for only one stack space on a residential property. So, and I can refer back to the site plan if needed, but if you recall, there was a, I'll go back and explain it. This is a good slide for it. So the driveway is proposed to be expanded like such. So there's room for two cars at present and the code says you can have one stack space, but you cannot have more than one. So in order to have a total of two stack spaces here and here, you would need a waiver to code. Go back to the conditions. Number two is just to ensure, again, as I mentioned, that there would be a suitable setback and barrier, either setback or curb or barrier of some kind installed to prevent vehicles from driving forward into the ADU structure. So there is code support for that. Number three is about the driveway again. So the width that's actually proposed is a little deficient. You need at least nine feet of width for a parking space to be considered a legal parking space per the zoning code. So we would like to see the driveway widened to 18 feet. And then per the concerns that were shared from our fire chief and police chief, they were concerned about the maneuverability aspect in terms of vehicles backing in and out of that driveway. We would like to see the width extended all the way to East Collins and then have that curb cut slash apron improved as appropriate to widen it, capture the full 18 feet. In order to do work in the right-of-way, you need what's called a curb gutter sidewalk permit. And this comes from our service department. They review and process those. So that would need to be obtained as well for work in the right-of-way. And so for the time being, I think these, this particular aspect of widening the driveway needs to be needs to be perhaps further explored, and perhaps this condition can be amended in some fashion if this were to progress to city council. But for the time being, we would feel that the conditional use should not be approved if, for some reason, that driveway expansion is not feasible due to that excessive slope that I showed you leading up to the house, or if the curb gutter sidewalk permit, for whatever reason or another, cannot be permitted to be approved. Then we feel that the parking aspect is not in a place that is approvable or recommended for approval, at least. That was mentioned in staff's preliminary review, which you may have seen in the back of your packet. So yeah, this is definitely a multi-part condition, at least at present. And then finally, per the fire chief's concern, there was a lot of overgrown vegetation that he especially noticed on some of the street view imagery, and he would like for that to be trimmed back to try to reduce the potential hazard in terms of a fire spreading. If a fire were to break out, that can, of course, feed potential fire, and so there was a condition similar to this, actually, for the first accessory dwelling unit as well. So hopefully, nothing too unusual with that. Lastly, I will conclude here. Given the comments that we received from the fire chief and the police chief, and given the planning commission is...certainly, it's within the scope of planning commission to consider public health and safety and whatever other comments or testimony may have been provided tonight. So just to ensure that there would be a complete record here if there was ever any inclination whatsoever based on the comments or testimony, given that this use were leaning toward a denial or there were a motion made for denial, we would just recommend, as staff, that clear findings of fact be stated and incorporated into a motion for denial. And there are some potential findings of fact that are provided in the staff report. You can reach other findings if you wish, but there are certain reasons or facts that may argue the other way. Staff has ultimately, in considering the weight of the evidence before us, the various facts at play, our conclusion is that we feel this use should be approved ultimately with the conditions as recommended.
Say that again, your conclusion is?
Our conclusion in the report is we're recommending approval.
Right, okay, right.
There's a lot of substance to this case, though, and so just to ensure that there was as complete a record as possible and as robust of guidance as possible to the commission, I just wanted to offer up some potential findings of fact that could be adopted if the inclination of the commission, again, based on comments, testimony, discussion, if it leans toward a denial. I believe there are some findings of fact that can support that position, but again, ultimately, our read of this case, our read of the facts, the details, the comments that have already been provided by other departments, is that we would land in the approval category in terms of our recommendation. So that's essentially it. I am happy to take any questions at all from the commission.
Are there any questions for Mr. Moore?
On item number three on page 13 of our packet, it speaks of, and I know I'm being perhaps very picky here, but that's, I think, what I'm cautioned to be and do. And that is item number three, which speaks about if the driveway expansion is not feasible, is pretty much what you were just saying a minute ago, from to excessive slope or other engineering considerations. And I ask myself, well, isn't that something that there could be a mock-up of, something that could foretell that without having actually to execute the work? And there I say, whoops, doesn't meet the standards. Do you follow?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I'm not sure at the present time that we have enough conclusive evidence, shall I say, that the driveway can in fact be expanded as shown. And so what this is basically saying is that, you know, once the application, or should the application progress to the point where it will come to a point where that sort of detail has to be worked through, perhaps that sort of detail is not precisely known or could be known at this time just by simply drawing lines on a plan to show an expanded driveway, because there are likely engineering considerations in terms of utilities, in terms of maybe needing a retaining wall of some kind, drainage. There's a number of things that, in my capacity, I'm not able to assess, and so...
And then would they be enumerated in concern with respect to engineering considerations, quote-unquote? That is, engineering considerations being factors which would militate against approval. So I scratch my head and I say, well, what engineering considerations? And I think you've just outlined them, actually. So I need not pursue that, because I think you know what I'm asking.
Yes, I think absolutely, I know what you're asking, and if that is something that is important to the commission and to council, that that detail be more precisely known, because what this condition is saying is if that cannot be worked out in some way or it's not found to be feasible, then the approval would be null and void, basically. And so if we can better determine that through maybe having an engineer weigh in or be able to better assess the conditions and possible ways in which that driveway can be improved to expand it and to accommodate the two required parking spaces, then that could possibly be made a requirement or a stipulation of this process so that that can be worked out before granting the use.
That's good, that's a complete answer. Thank you.
Dr. Perthrich?
I have three kind of technical questions, because these ADUs are pretty new to us. And so there's some things I'm trying to process. First of all, in terms of the grandfathering as per the, you know, equitable estoppel case from 1999, so it's permitted for five, does the permit run with the property or with the building?
It runs with the property. Well, it would run with whatever the legal description is that's attached to the agreement.
And is that an address in the agreement?
I'm not sure, although I would know that the rental permit that's on file would more or less reflect or mirror the agreement in terms of the number aspect, the numeric aspect.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to the additional density. I believe in density, but I'm a little surprised that if you build a new structure, you can take advantage of all of these things that were previously attached to one house as opposed to now two structures. But that's kind of a legal interpretation question. But your interpretation is that five is a legitimate expectation for the sum of the two structures?
Well, I don't think I'm really coming to a conclusion on that. I think in my presentation, what I was suggesting is maybe the notion that the property owner and manager have, and their argument is that, well, we're permitted for five, but we're only really leasing to three, and so can't we just move two of those occupants to another structure?
Wouldn't this not be a separate rental permit, though?
It would be a separate permit, because it would be a separate address.
So that kind of answers the question. I'm not saying I'm opposed to, but I just technically, if it's a separate permit, I don't see how it runs with, you know, you're automatically titled to additional two.
Yeah, so I think what you're getting at is the technicalities of it, but I think, given the discretionary nature of this process, we can kind of consider those details in a more discretionary fashion.
Okay, that's fine. That was just a technical question. Number two, are there any requirements in our code for the requirement of some kind of pedestrian access? Right now, you're imagining two stacked cars right up to the door of a unit. Is there...I mean, a traditional house would have a front walk that might be separate from a driveway. Is there any requirement here, or is that, you know, for this?
So our zoning code does not require a walkway for residential property. There is one that was recently adopted for commercial, was adopted into our parking code, but in terms of residential, naturally, a walkway usually is made a part of the plan. So it's not necessarily a code requirement in terms of having that walkway. What is a code requirement is having the entrance to the principal unit be oriented or upon the street. And so usually, what that does is it kind of takes care of that pedestrian element without explicitly requiring it.
But based on what you're also saying, based on the discretionary nature of that, that's a legitimate thing to look at?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And the third one was about the nature of a microwave satisfying an ADU. You know, in terms of long-term sustainability of creating a new ADU, does a mini-fridge and a microwave really create a dwelling unit?
And I think these are...
I mean, it's not about technicality, but in terms of a standalone unit, I mean, these things could be rented separately in the future. The idea that, I mean, we're creating a new dwelling unit that's separate, would like to stand on its own. Typically, the planning commission weren't not dealing with the level of like the fridge, the refrigerator underneath the counter, but is that also a legitimate subject of conversation tonight?
In my view, and I may defer to legal, too, on this particular question, but in my view, it's those types of questions that perhaps weren't asked when this legislation was initially adopted. And I think it's a bit of apples and oranges when we compare this to the first case, because what the first case was, was a much larger structure that was already basically developed as a dwelling, essentially to legalize what already existed. And so this is really like the first true case, the first true test we have of the legislation that was adopted in '17.
I'll add to that, the kitchen definition just has food preparation is all it says.
Popcorn baker.
There's not much in there for that in the Property Maintenance Code.
Just as a further question related to that, what is required in terms of insulation and heating, heating/cooling for this? Is there anything beyond the Property Maintenance Code?
I could not speak to that, but...
I could give a quick answer, and then the architect to applicant to...there's an energy code requirement for dwelling units, has the R values and everything, so it wouldn't just be the garage.
And you need to have it heated?
Yes, it has to have a heat source.
Okay.
Yes, has to have ventilation, cooling's not required. It needs to have ventilation. Yes, but I'm sure Scott Webb could answer that in more detail.
So much along the lines of what defines a kitchen, I, for some reason, and I must be wrong if the code enforcement is fine with this, I thought a bedroom had to be 75 square foot or larger to qualify as a...
Seventy.
Seventy, okay. Also, are there requirements, and maybe they're in here, the difference between a room and a bedroom is normally the closet or some kind of component, egress, those kind of things. Has that...I only saw the elevation of the front, so I'm also, I mean, they're going to have to put windows in what is, I would assume, a solid wall of a garage for egress. Has that all been...I mean, I see one there, but I mean, there's a box in the corner, which I can't make out if that's a closet, if that's where the furnace is. I am on page 39.
Egress windows will be required in sleeping areas. The closet is not a requirement. The closet cannot be counted, cannot be included in the square footage, minimum square footage. So just because you don't see an opening here doesn't mean one won't be required.
Okay. And then, much on the technicality side, something that caught my attention, and I don't know that we've dealt with this, ADU or otherwise, I mean, we have in property line splits, is this is right on the property line. So for a shed or an accessory dwelling or an auxiliary purpose, that's permissible. Is there any consideration for that when we're talking about dwelling? So if you want to have a shed for your lawnmower, you can put that bad boy within 2.3 inches of the property line, have a nice day, it's a temporary structure. Are there any considerations there? Because when I read the fire chief's assumption that one goes, three goes, I noticed the property line in proximity to other buildings, and then the note also on page nine about seven versus 10 feet. So could you speak to that a little bit for me, sir?
Yes, yes, great question. So I will say that the code is not entirely clear on what setback provisions are to apply to these ADUs. There are deeper setbacks required for primary dwellings. For one, there's a 35-foot rear yard setback that would in no way be met by this particular proposal. When it comes to an accessory structure, whether that be a shed or a detached structure of some kind, the setback requirement is at least three feet. So given the plan that we have and showing where this structure is situated, it looks like it's pretty much right on the property line, more or less. So there isn't really any...it's not exemplifying compliance at this moment. So it is a pre-existing structure, being that it was built in 1940, predate zoning, so it is a...I think it would be a very different conversation if this structure didn't already exist. I think I'll just leave it at that.
Well, and then, a little bit of a piggyback off of that, when Dr. Perthrich was talking about the property description, at least when I've read my property description, there's a description of the parcel, but also any dwellings on it. So if the property description identifies a house with a garage, and we're talking about having, you know, I get that it'll be one property with two addresses, but I am concerned that this will change the property description, so how does that affect the grandfather? Because you said the grandfather clause lives with the property description. The other thing, too, is because these are two different addresses, and again, if the owner wants to rent it to five people who get along great and everything, that's super, but I think part of the implied condition at minimum is a coexistence. But that's literally like saying that my neighbor and I have to, like, that is problematic. So I think that's where...and again, it could be just the kitchen, the proximity, those kind of things. And I realize some of it's uncharted territory, but also, I'm not, I don't know, I actually like, in general, the concept. I think it's pretty innovative, and trust me, this is a better use and facade of the garage, so I like that part of it. I'm just concerned, and you guys know I love my perpetuity and precedence and all that, that's where I'm really concerned, is because, conceptually, I think this is a clever idea. I just want to make sure that we're not missing something, or, again, you know, having a codependence on access to a kitchen sounds good, but that may not be reality forever. And technically, and again, this is only because I do a lot of administrative stuff with you and Mr. Perry, not that we would ever approve it, but two different addresses? I see somebody wanting to lot-split this sometime if they want to sell or merge, and so...what are we not seeing here in that respect as far as, I mean, I'm probably tapping more into your education or your research versus this specific case, but is this common for us to have codependent units, if you will? Because like I said, all the other ADUs are standalone, complete. I'm less concerned with the alley access, but that's also another variant that I don't think we've come across, is a non-alley situation. I threw a lot at you there.
There are quite a few, if I could jump in there. There are quite a few multiple principal buildings on parcels around town that were not ever approved by the city of Oxford. They just were there for so long.
Whether they're codependent or not, we don't know, but there are multiple buildings on parcels. They're not necessarily accessory to each other, they just exist. And so they pre-existed any codes or rules, and so they've just been allowed to continue. One thing that Mr. Moore did not mention with regard to setbacks is there are building code requirements in addition to zoning code requirements that have to do with fire separation and fire resistance ratings near property lines. And I think that's really what you're getting at, and I'm sure Mr. Webb could speak to that. As far as distance from the property line goes, there's certain ratings that are required, so that would be part of the normal building code review process if you...
so that would be part of the normal building code review process if you decided to move this on. You don't have to, but that would be something that would come up.
Because we deal with that in Mile Square where there are no setbacks.
Right, and there's a rating required, so maybe no windows, or if there is a window, it's got to be a fire-rated window, that kind of thing.
All right.
Do those standards apply for the whole parcel? Because the buildings obviously are only one, five feet apart.
It would just apply to the part that's closest to the property line.
Yeah, that's what's weird, right? You'd have to have rules about distance there, but not to the building in which it's directly next to and which they share.
There's two fireproof triangles.
So I guess what I would add to that is, if you are, if that's something that you are concerned about maybe being missed in part of the building code review process, you could ask for that information before you make a decision, if you wanted to.
We're not exactly in discussion portion, but I'm definitely concerned over the, our fire chiefs, sort of concerns, more than you want to say. But I would be amenable to stuff like a sprinkler system, as he mentioned, something to mitigate the fact that they are so close. And if you are going to be codependent on a kitchen, the idea that you'll be in a totally different building while something might be cooking.
Oh, it is.
It's a bit scary, because I think we've all left stuff on the stove in the same house, and you're aware of it because you're in the same house. You're not aware of it.
Your next door.
It's in the next door, right? So I like crater density, I would like to see creative uses, I'm concerned about what the fire chief said, and I would like to see it mitigated by at least a sprinkler system in addition to his comments about shrubbery and other stuff that are between buildings.
So I have one last question, then we will give you reprieve. So I know, I was off by five square feet, but I know that there's the bedroom requirement. Is there a living space requirement percentage-wise?
I don't believe for one and two bedroom. I believe it is for three and four bedroom, but not for one and two.
Okay. We're not in discussion, but I have a hypothetical solution. So, any other questions for Mr. Moore? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Webb, it's your turn.
All right, well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. So yeah, little building with a lot of things to talk about this evening, I guess. So to start with, a few of you know that I was involved or attended a lot of work sessions when we developed this accessory dwelling unit thing, and you know, Zach didn't really mention it, it's well represented in his staff report that this did sort of anticipate new construction, and so a lot of the standards had to do with new construction, which clearly this isn't it. But keep in mind, I mean, the standards that you wrote at that time was, you know, reflective of the mass and scale of what's going on in the Mile Square. You specifically wanted these to be secondary buildings, a carriage house was a word we used a lot, that's, you know, exactly what it is. So the case we're bringing you tonight is, well, what if we have an actual carriage house instead of building a new one somewhere on the property? So in this case, we're actually talking about an adaptive reuse of something that is completely abandoned, has not been served any purpose for quite some time. Planning commission has recently had an interest in density, especially when it comes to adjacency to the university. We feel like this is maybe an opportunity for that as well. Obviously, this is the best kind of infill, because it doesn't even require any construction. So, you know, we're able to adaptively reuse and find a creative solution for this. And when it comes to maintaining the neighborhood, I mean, what could maintain the neighborhood more than to use the buildings that are currently there? So, you know, we feel like there's a lot of reason to do this. So I guess we should dive into some of the more specific concerns here, starting with the parking. It was really not our desire, I'll say, to do this parking. I feel that the grade is somewhat problematic there. I personally didn't anticipate a requirement to expand the driveway width, I think that would be really out of scale in this neighborhood and on this lot to, you know, not just expand it to the width of the two spaces that I'm showing, but as Zach had mentioned, I'm a little, I'm a little narrow on my width there, so it would actually be getting, you know, even wider than what we're showing and be a pretty good-sized curb cut out onto the street. The compromise here was to, you know, sort of keep that curb cut, bring the parking back out of the front yard setback and push it up in there. You know, it is going to require some cooperation among the residents to make this work, but as a person with a, that spends all day, every day in the Mile Square, I see this go on all day, every day in the Mile Square, people are jockeying cars all the time, if you can't leave it alone for the day and park it in a long-term lot, then you might have to jockey it around with your roommates or neighbors here. As far as grade goes, maybe to address Mr. Dana's concern and what staff was saying, I think maybe the simplest way, I think what staff is really saying is that, you know, parking is required. You may require this parking, and if we can't provide it, then we can't do the conditional use. Short and sweet. I would venture to say there's no problem, a little money won't solve, kind of a joke in my business. But I mean, between retaining walls, grade, terracing, I mean, it would be possible, I mean, we're only talking about four feet of dirt here, I mean, this is, anything is possible with dirt, but it could become rather expensive, and I'm not certain that it would be the best-looking thing for the neighborhood either, but I think that it would be possible if in fact parking was required. We would certainly appreciate your consideration of perhaps not providing the parking, and maybe a compromise might be that we could perhaps, instead of expanding this extra parking up there, maybe we put in a new sidewalk along the existing parking to provide that pedestrian connection up that way in lieu of trying to shove some more cars on the lot. So certainly would be open to some consideration for you on that part. Something else, just kind of an overarching sort of thing, as we've started to allude to, the zoning code isn't all by itself here, there's a lot of other codes that we have to comply with, and, you know, we didn't write the description of the kitchen, but that's what the code allows, and that's something to consider, and, you know...
Are you doing that?
Nope. I thought it was my magnetism. But, you know, so, yes, my clients have said these may in fact be, you know, somewhat dependent, these likely might be rented to people that know each other or friends or whatever, but I think to your commissioner's point here also, that may not always be the case. And so, that being said, you know, I would like to sort of tackle these codes one at a time. I mean, are we providing a different type of housing? You know, we could maybe even call it affordable housing, minimal kitchens, we allow efficiency apartments with next-to-no kitchens, not even bedrooms. This is just a, it's a very small unit with limited services, but it has proximity to the university, and we think it is rentable in its current state. So we don't necessarily find them, you know, to be dependent upon one another and really don't want to see a condition that would make it so. With regard to the occupancy, and maybe to Mr. Watt's concern about addresses, commercial properties all over town, really every residential property has multiple addresses, and so there's no way to split this lot, you know, no administratively, no, just simply no way to do it. I don't think that would be, hopefully wouldn't be a functional concern, so to speak, that this could ever be done. That being said though, I do think that, you know, when we did talk about the creation of the accessory dwelling units, the idea was to create density and, you know, to use some unused portions of some of these big deep lots we have in the Mile Square. I think at that time, you might have had the opportunity to say, you can only do an accessory dwelling unit if you make your front building compliant, but that didn't end up in the legislation. So, you know, the idea was, this was a standalone application, a standalone building, and was not by legislation, I don't believe, codependent on what happens to the building in the front. In fact, the only other one that we did, which happened to be my case from a couple years ago, we didn't talk about the front building in any way, it was unrelated to the case at hand, and I think that should be the case here as well. Lastly, or not lastly, but a couple things with regard to setbacks. Yes, we wouldn't do this, we wouldn't be allowed to do this if we're starting it new, but as an adaptive reuse, kind of work with what we've got. So building code requirements with regard to model energy code, this is an adaptive reuse when you turn, you know, I always tell a client, for the same reason you won't let me build a two-bedroom house on a lot that doesn't meet code, you also won't let me turn a garage into a house that doesn't meet code. I mean, it's not a workaround. So if you're changing the use, you're bringing it up to code for the current use, that includes model energy code.
Mr. Webb, if you'll...
I just wondered if you could speak up just a little?
Oh, sorry, I think I'm just turning around, turning too much perhaps. So when we get back to setbacks and things like that, yes, to Mr. Dana's point, this is very close to the property line, but as Sam pointed out, we, again, the building code is going to come into effect here, and, you know, like we have in the uptown area, and you can build closer and closer to the property line right up to zero in some cases from a building code perspective. As we get closer to the property line, the more fire-rated, the more fire-resistant that we have to make it, the limits on the openings, all those things kick into effect. So, you know, yes, it would be a zoning concern if we were to build this thing anew, perhaps. Now it's a building code concern, how we can make it fire-protective. Likewise, when it comes to the separation of the two buildings from one another, as you know, we have lots of duplexes where we have two units that actually touch one another, these certainly do not touch. That being the case, the building code would prescribe us to draw an imaginary line between these two, consider that our property line, so to speak, with regard to how fire-resistant we have to make the structures. So if these buildings are 10 feet apart, and our imaginary line, we put down the middle is five, we have to make sure that each building is fire-protected as if it were five feet away from a property line. So building code takes care of that as we get through there. So with regard to the conditions, obviously putting a, you know, a curb stop of some sort to keep the car from running into the house, I think we've seen this year, that's a good thing to do around town, we've had a few cars in houses, so we're certainly not opposed to that. I would certainly appreciate your consideration on not expanding the driveway and swapping that extra parking for the sidewalk up to this new unit, and I think that's really all I have. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Webb?
I do have a question about the kitchen. So I've stayed in some pretty darn tiny places, and it is possible to have, like in that space, a little ditty stove and all of the cute little things, like is that something that owner would reconsider doing? Like, yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, cool, cool. Just because that dependency on the other kitchen...
Sure.
Could become a problem in the future, so...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think it's really...
You know, the cute little IKEA kitchen, or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've seen...
Bad example. I know what you mean.
But you're right, there are such things as, they used to call them apartment-sized stoves, really only have two burners, I mean, we might be able to squeeze something else in there if that would be more comfortable for you.
I have a follow-up on Ms. Rosenberg's. On page 39, which, if, Mr. Moore, if you could get us to something closer on the ADU, perfect, just to the right of the word kitchen at, is that an existing window?
Yes.
Okay. This is probably more of an observation off my question is, not that I want to reduce light in there, but wall space there may accommodate some of the concerns of the kitchen or an expansion, or even a low rise, but I just, I wasn't sure if that was a window sign.
And the concern is?
Just meaning right now, based on the land use, so to speak, there's only so much for the sink and the fridge, but, you know, a wraparound or something smaller might be feasible, I just, I wasn't sure if that was an existing window or a proposed window.
Right, okay.
So...
No, I think you make a good point. As you can imagine, those 1940s windows that were built for a garage are going to be replaced in this process also, you know, in order to meet egress requirements, which were mentioned before, there's nothing sacred at this point, so to speak, about the location of that window. I do think it would be nice to get some light on that side of the room, but you're right, that would be a good opportunity to maybe stretch that kitchen or bend it around or something.
Or sink it, sink window it. Any other questions for Mr. Webb? All right, thank you, sir. All right, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this business item? So if you would just do us a favor and tell us your name and your address so that they can...sorry?
City Council. Do you want my address?
Uh, yeah.
204 East West Scott Street in Liberty, Indiana.
Perfect.
I just wanted to speak to the issue of the house being permitted for five, and there was a concern with us asking for two more, because it's all in the same lot. I did propose to Zach that we are perfectly fine with complying with the house to a four-person occupancy, like, and, yeah, that would be perfectly fine, because we don't rent that house to five people, so, if that helps. That's all I have.
All right, thanks a lot.
Want a motion to close public hearing?
I shall move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Perfect, we are in closed session. All right.
I have one, oh, I was just going to say, one point of clarification, I appreciate Mr. Webb's observation that they're separate, but I just food for thought. The square, permissible square footage of the ADU is completely based off of the main dwelling, so unfortunately, they are tied together. I just thought I'd throw that out there. It's more of a point of order.
So, all right, Mr. Brackett?
I was just going to say, so, as I pointed out, my chief concern is fire, and sprinklers would help, obviously, because, one, if there's fire in that small adaptive unit, put it out, and it would also help with connection, but it doesn't resolve the actual issue of going over and leaving a burner on in the house, because that's not where the sprinkler is. So if we were to ask for sprinklers to mitigate this. So I would also think it would be a good idea to do sprinklers to actually have a small stove, particularly like an induction stove, which can be flat, and also will only create heat in the proper item on there, so you can't leave a flame on, you can't leave a hot surface on unless it's...so in terms of safety, that would mean a lot, and I think would be beneficial, you wouldn't have to have co-used kitchen space across buildings, which is kind of crazy to me. But with that, I'm mostly happy with this use, if you put in sprinklers and address the kitchen.
Separate the kitchens.
Yep.
Well, since, you know, maybe the privilege as a person who got to work on the code that permitted ADUs in Oxford, they're kind of new to us, and they haven't been used very often, but I think this kind of fulfills the intent of what we were looking at. I mean, Mr. Webb was part of those conversations, you know, at the time, we were seeing a lot of housing development out on the fringe to meet increasing demand, and rather than seeing sprawling housing development on the fringe or demolition of the Mile Square, the conversation was, how can we feather in the density? You know, how can we add density without destroying the historical fabric? And I think that this meets the intent of what we were talking about. I mean, I think our code was specific about the construction of new ADUs, but I don't think it was to the exclusion of the conversion of these existing structures. So the idea that you could maintain the 1909 house, get another one to two or, you know, occupants in here, the facade of the street looks basically the same and is probably improved over the garage, I consider that a win as long as we can mitigate some of those other things. And I'm going to have to trust the construction, you know, the fire code as far as the fire rating of the siding and that kind of stuff. So I actually like, I'm in support of this. Unfortunately, our code is also, yeah, competing cross, it works cross purposes. We let density, but we insist on three-part. And then we have lot coverage requirements on top of that, and even that, what's the lot coverage here? We calculated that?
I think it's actually okay.
It's okay?
If I remember correctly.
So this is what I'm going to say, is that if I think about what we, what our purposes are, those things that are really important to us, the density, the sustainability of it, the affordability of the housing are priorities, whether or not we... the affordability of the housing are priorities, whether or not we accommodate these additional parking spaces and then widen the... So, then we have two vehicular ingress and egress on a steep slope. If you said to me, like, let's get rid of all the parking on this lot, I'd be, okay, fine. You know, like, I'm, it's a steep slope, people will accelerate up to get onto this plateau. It does create a structural hazard. Someone who doesn't have, you know, you're accelerating up in an ice storm. So, to me, adding more cars to the lot because of our code, which is based on assumptions that were really important to people 20 years ago. If this is a conditional use thing, I say, I don't need additional parking, especially I don't need 18 feet of additional curb cut with two cars hanging out on the sidewalk. I'd rather see one rank of parking and a pedestrian access and some protection for the yard area so we don't see cars parked the way they do. You know, that's not a deal breaker for me. And, yeah, if someone want to twist my arm into saying, let's just eliminate the on-street parking. You can do that for me too, but I'll stop where, there. Condition number three, I don't think I want to stand by that just because, anyway, I'll stop.
You're saying you would not want to stand by that?
Yeah, I don't, 18 feet of double-ranked cars that are now going to hang out on a slope on the sidewalk.
Right.
You know, for what purpose?
Hey, Dave, I would like to follow up with a question. I actually support what you say completely. I would like to see less cars. I would like to see less parking available, forcing people to use the other ways available to them. This is East Collins Street. I do not see why some student living on East Collins Street must have their car parked right there. Their classes are right there, the rec center is near there, the clinic is near there. Everything is near there and uptown is near there, so...
VCR TAs?
VCR TA is right there. So, for me, I just want to speak as someone who lives on Arrowhead Drive, which is a really good example of almost everything we ever talk about here. We actually did have a driveway that was expanded in order to accommodate parking, which actually makes more sense on Arrowhead Drive. And we were happy about it a little bit because of, you know, the congested parking situation. But, once again, I'll go back to, this is East Collins Street, this is not Arrowhead Drive. Plus, it is so ugly. Even if it was necessary, whereas it is not attractive, so.
The driveway.
The driveway. And the stock cars. And the fact that there are four cars, just like in a box.
And four invites five and then pretty soon they're wedged.
So, my follow-up to what you said is just, I agree completely and I don't see this as a necessity. They have Dittmer and they have Vilett, so.
So, I don't object and I agree with all your values there, but we do have to address this in the code eventually. It's inconsistent. It puts me in a really bad place because I would like to treat everybody the same, but the values conflict with what's written and what we've done in the past. This is also such a weird situation. I don't know how to apply it anyway. But, yeah, we, these problems need to be addressed in a larger scale.
Mr. Moore?
Just interject, just for a moment. I love what you just said there because, and this is kind of the beauty of the conditional use process, is everything's case by case, right? And everything has different context. If this were a lot that had adjacency to an alley and could easily provide four parking spaces, then it probably wouldn't be a big deal and they would probably meet the code just fine, but... Just, it just so happens that the context for this one is such that it, as you're, you may be suggesting at the moment, maybe four parking spaces doesn't make sense.
Well, and Mr. Moore and Mr. Webb both addressed, and actually Dr. Berthridge is, and it's funny, I'm doing an environmental one for you. The extra concrete and then water flow issues and all that, we've just doubled the drainpipe to the street. So, that's a concern for me. Ms. Blackmore, if I'm walking, now I have twice as much on a bike or walking to pay attention to. And we all know, people hang over the sidewalk even though it's a big no-no. But something Mr. Webb said, I believe, is if we move this over and have a retaining wall, now we have an arbitrary structure that is, you know, if you think about a drive and a wall, that's not fun to have to navigate around. You're peeking over a wall and, you know, if somebody walks and falls and, I mean, the whole thing. But if, and again, we're just kind of hashing this out, I think we're all on the same page is, I think we all like the sidewalk more than two more parking spots because it also addresses the pedestrian component to the residency. I think, I don't think it addresses the fire and police, but I think it mitigates to an extent because there's a walkway that takes them to a dwelling as opposed to this concrete mass. So, if, if we go that route, I just want to make sure that we capture that staff, you know, will work with, with the applicant to get, you know, the proper walkways. And, I mean, you'll know how it can connect to the front or if it should go to the driveway. I mean, I think we're comfortable with that, but...
With respect to what Dr. Prister has said and Mr. Brackett and Ms. Rosenberg in particular about parking, I want to say as someone who very recently lived in that ecology that you speak of, and I think that the conclusions that you're drawing regarding parking and the role of parking are precisely the ones that would move us forward as opposed to have a stall. We don't want a stall. We want to make, I think we, we have to do both things that Mr. Brackett is speaking about. We have to have universal, generalized words, but we also have to solve this immediate problem. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I was saying. I'd like to stay consistent, but I'm making sure it applies here and we have some maneuverability within that. I was going to say, I agree also, in terms of my concerns for fire and safety, having greater accessibility with one line of cars and a walkway, having greater visibility actually makes a big difference with something that's said so closely to some buildings. So, with that, normally I protest just for consistency, even though I agree with the values expressed. Here, I don't think that applies.
Right.
Line of sight's more important.
Well, all these things, right?
Yeah.
So many.
Good. So, I have a sneaking suspicion a motion is coming. I just want to, for point of order. I was going to...
Oh, well, if you're going to say it or not, I was going to say, I'd like to get everybody else's opinion on the sprinkler aspect.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry, Sam.
It's concerning to me. I would like to have that. In fact, I would gladly get rid of the additional driveway requirements for a sprinkler system that can ensure or strongly mitigate the chance of fire there and spreading.
Well, the first time I heard you speak and what you said, I'm very much in favor of the question and really knowing from a fire chief's point of view, how much of a system could actually impact and what it would do. But I think it's a more than a good first step, so I'm solidly behind it.
So, I have kind of a clarifying question for you, Mr. Brackett. If the applicant is open to more of the separate kitchen facilities, I'm more comfortable with no sprinkler because we're going to have the firewalls and rated. If we separate that and basically treat it as two separate entities, I think we've eliminated the, I'm over here doing this and that. In my opinion. I mean, you might be seeing something I'm not thinking about.
I mean, I read the fire chief's report and it worries me. One building is three buildings and the distance is, I could literally...
He did make the point of inadequate cooking. That was the third point.
And that we could put in there as a suggestion too, like I mentioned, as you mentioned, but also an induction stove where you can't leave it on without a pump in it and still produce heat.
And no offense to Fire Department, but they like the idea of sprinklering in all sort of instances.
Yeah.
Whether it's practically...
I just want to be like 300 maybe square feet, like I'm, like, that's, I, it just seems like a lot to add a sprinkler system to that, but...
See, in some ways, that's more concerning to me because it's a very small little area in which people are tightly packed.
I hear you.
I do think that...
I'm not a sprinkler expert.
I'm going to take, I'm going to take the applicant at face value, which is, these are going to be two separate units. And if they're truly going to be two separate units, I think the kitchen setups have to be functionally separate so that you can rent them separately. The idea of any interdependency, and I know that a microwave could technically meet the code, but I think that, like, it should be possible to have some kind of fully functional kitchen in here. And then I'd like these to be flexible and rentable to a variety of people and not have to be interdependent between the two units. And then, and then it addresses the idea of leaving the popcorn on in the other unit.
And also, I mean, this is probably utopian, but I've seen this before where something along these lines, this could be a retired couple or a couple of folks back there, and then the front house is, you know, three college kids or three young professionals, so.
Mr. Perry?
I just wanted to weigh in on the sprinkler comment a little bit. One correction to the staff report, it is within your power to require that under health, safety and welfare. That is a, that is a change to the staff report. And I'll also say that some of the information that we've talked about tonight, since this wasn't a building code, this was not a building permit, what the resistance ratings will be provided weren't part of the proposal, so the fire chief didn't have the benefit of reviewing that. So, I have a recommended condition, since it sounds like you're leaning toward approval, that would potentially give the fire chief an opportunity to weigh in during the building permit process and determine if that's satisfactory, and it may be. And if not, then potentially require a sprinkler system.
That's highly to be desired, exactly what you think the access the fire chief would have to various solutions as the permit went along. Is that, was that right?
Yeah, and a residential project like this wouldn't normally be reviewed by the fire chief. It's relied upon by the building official. So, I can just read that out if you want.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
A fire-resistant building could report by a third party as determined by staff shall be provided to the fire chief. If the ratings are not sufficient, a sprinkler system shall be provided.
Works for me.
And then I have another condition to replace number three, which is an additional walkway serving the ADU shall be provided.
My only other addition to that is that, that it be separated from the driveway.
Right.
That they be physically separated from the driveway. And I don't know what the design solution is there, so it just doesn't become an extension of the driveway, whether that's a little bit of tree lawn or some kind of physical separation. You may end up with steps that go up the slope, like you do have a little, and that, just so the cars don't park on it and it doesn't be...
I hear boxwood are lovely.
What's that?
I said, I hear boxwood are lovely.
So, I mean, I would, it's a, I can imagine, yeah, I think that would do it. And I think that less parking pressure, that little, I can imagine a little being like a courtyard area between the two doors. I would love for that to be nicer and not just packed with cars. So, you know, if the applicant, I don't want to make it a condition, but if the applicant didn't have to provide an additional X amount of concrete, something to, some kind of paver area between those two units so that people could sit outside with a grill.
Nice grill again is probably cheaper.
Yeah, so, yeah, if we're going to give you back the concrete we might have given you if you could put in some other improvement, but that's just me talking and not a condition. Because I can see the people coming out and the driveway can be a nice patio area. I want this to be a livable unit that has some additional outdoor space. We don't really require that. But I don't want cars to be parked right at the front door. It'd be nice if that were a nice space. I mean, again, I would like, we don't have a lot of these and if this succeeds, we might see more of them. So, I would like this to be a solution the community views as not exploitative or, you know, but a nice addition. And so, if you can make it nice, we might see more of these and be happy with them, but that's just basic.
And the fact that it's not a standalone structure, you know, it strengthens it from my point of view.
Multiples.
Yeah. Okay?
All right.
So... No, I really urge you to make a motion.
He's going to second.
Yeah.
So, whoever wants to make the motion?
Well, then I'll make a motion. Well, I think we should support this proposal contingent upon the conditions outlined here with respect to parking, with respect to street worry, with respect to code enforcement, with respect to all of the items that are mentioned here by staff.
And to specify, that also includes the sprinkler and fire chief approval.
Right, right.
Mr. Perry, simply because of the way we do minutes now, would you read the conditions?
Sure.
So that they're in the record?
So, number one is about the waiver. Waiver is hereby granted to allow two stack parking spaces. Is that one still needed?
I'm not sure if that one's still needed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we'll strike that one. All right. So, then, what about this one?
I think that should still apply just with respect to the existing driveway in terms of making sure there's a suitable barrier for that existing driveway.
Yet the barrier is still in play.
So, what is numbered as, what is numbered as number two in the staff report would be number one? Okay, got it. Regarding the barrier, the setback in barrier between parking space and structure, I will read the whole thing. And the new, the number two would be, an additional walkway separated from the driveway serving the ADU shall be provided.
Yeah, I'd like to emphasize the elevated curb, that's what you're referring to.
Okay.
And I want to emphasize that it could be included in the motion.
We will bolt that in our minds and know that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
And then striking what is numbered as number three in the staff report. And then number four would be vegetation along the western and northern boundaries to be removed. I won't read the whole thing. And, or actually, that would be number three. And then the last one would be, a fire-resistant building could report by a third party as determined by staff shall be provided to the fire chief. If the ratings are not sufficient, a sprinkler system shall be provided.
Amen.
So, the one additional thing that we've been talking about but not captured in the code, I would move that if it's a friendly motion, that a full-service kitchen be included within the dwelling unit. And I don't, you know...
And itty-bitty.
Yeah.
So, right now...
Well, I don't know what proper language is for that.
I support that.
They make very tiny stones.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, induction stones, they can just sit on top of the kitchen.
I've been to South America. They make small ones.
I don't know what the technical is, but something more than a microwave, you know, so it provides...
Right, 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 right.
Were you able to capture the kitchen condition?
Yeah.
I think that would be number five.
We were not.
This is where you make your money.
Yeah.
I would just say the dwelling unit shall, shall include a...
Traditional.
A full-service kitchen?
Yeah, I don't know.
Full-service slash traditional.
Kitchen. I don't know what that means. Maybe you could go a better, more traditional language. I don't...
It sounds like the only thing we're talking about is essentially a hot plate or induction, some kind of, something hot plate equivalent.
The fire chief wanted to, he was a, the observation was without any kind of stove top that somebody plug in three or four hot pads. I think that's what we're trying to avoid. Something, you could say, permanent or...
Induction stove top?
A stove appliance.
Yeah, that's what, I don't know that we, yes, I don't want appliances, specifying appliances at plan to emission level, but...
A full-service.
Here we are.
There is a real distinction between...
Run it up.
Yeah, I did, didn't I?
A typical stove top and a...
You're really into this induction stove. Are you going to make...
I'm a gas stove guy, sorry. I got nothing.
You can make the stove out of it.
You guys don't seem to be in agreement, so just take it out.
How we doing, right?
A hot plate device is inherently more dangerous than a full stove, is what I'm saying. Induction's even more safe, which is why I was suggesting that, but I don't require that. I wouldn't require that, but...
Should we say like a permanent or like not permanent?
Permanent, I like that.
Yeah, like...
Permanent comma full service.
Nontemporary stove.
Okay, no.
You subject, the staff can find what the right language is.
No, that's just here.
Is this necessary with the fire resistance stuff?
Yeah.
Well, we were trying to separate the kitchens.
Yeah.
You know that? Yeah. Thank you.
Yes. We need to be separate dwelling units.
Okay.
They, they, they live here on the internet, yeah.
So, do we need to hear the language then on this topic?
Yep.
I would die to hear number five.
A kitchen providing...
All I have is, the dwelling unit shall include a more substantial stove.
If you need counsel, you can like figure this out.
Oh, I can't wait till you guys have to explain this to counsel.
This will be easy. We didn't want them to have to share a kitchen between two buildings.
And it's, I mean, we're all talking with each other and you get, I mean, it seems like we're all in agreement, so the letter of this, no one's going to be...
The two guys are going to...
So, let's proceed.
Building permit are sitting here.
Yeah, so, okay, so we're...
They're going to remember it.
Yeah.
All right, so this calamity of a motion from Mr. Dana, and who wants to take credit for the second? Mr. Brackett? All right, I think we beat the discussion unless anybody has any parting words on this one.
Like I say, I want to say... I want it to work. I hope you do a high-quality product that, that people provides a model so we feel good about this in the future and not bad about it.
My apologies for giving him an invitation.
Yes, well...
Okay, moving forward.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Dana. I believe we have captured all five conditions more than adequately. Mr. Brackett with the second. Voice vote or roll call?
I'll call it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Blackmore?
Yes.
Mr. Berthridge?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes. All right, the motion passes, thank you to the applicant, thank you.
Thank, thank you for the.
To our staff.
With the staff.
Yeah, almost on the dot. With Parley Pro, I am actually just going to take privilege and recess us for five minutes before we continue, so that folks can address any pressing issues.
How much more time do we have in this meeting?
It's a one hour block?
At least ten or fifteen minutes.
So, giving you more flexibility on how to handle that with this, these changes, I think, is what we're after. If there's other things that you want to address, this is the time to do it so we can do it all at the same time. We don't have to give it a complete fine-tooth comb tonight, but if you want to give Corey and I opportunity to, you know, with some feedback, we can dig into it a little bit more detail.
Yeah, I do actually have a question as the one person actually on another commission. I am a public official in another commission. And it says that I shall not hold any other office as a citizen.
Except for school board.
Except for school board.
Mr. Perry, maybe it's my, my hearing that went bad on me again, but what did you say with respect to affordable housing that I missed?
Uh, this, nothing on affordable housing on this with the bylaws. This is just procedure for the commission itself.
Right, no substance, okay.
Nothing, nothing specific to any subject matter of the cases, just your rules of procedure.
Right, okay, I grasp that much, okay.
And Ms. Rosenberg, I believe that is elected officials, not appointed.
Got you. Maybe you would want to say then, because it says no other public office. I know I'm now being pedantic, but...
No, we can make it as airtight and rigid as you want it to be.
What I'd really like you to do is fix the housing advisory.
I tried that once.
Yeah, yeah, but anyway, yeah, so I just thought I'd point that out that maybe elected official or...
Sure. There's also some gendered language in there that probably should be changed, like it says...
I thought we fixed some of that.
There's a couple I noticed the other day. You, you got most of them. So, I had, Mr. Smith and I had the opportunity to review this ahead of time, gosh, a month ago, and gave Mr. Perry feedback. And, you know, we had some conversations back and forth, but I had asked Mr. Perry, we're, we're the ones who would do it, I had suggested that maybe what we do is table this because, full disclosure, when I went to the police station to pick up my paper packet, I mean, I read through the thing, I, and I went to the police station because I wanted to scribble on the paper. And so I went and I noticed the law director, Christopher, that Christopher's not here, and if you read it, it says the law director, so simple things like "or designate." I, I notice, I, I missed those in the first revision, so I would like the chance to go back and look at a few things. And then, something I noticed, and, and I think Mr. Dana and I are probably only two people who have noticed this, when, when we changed the charter, remember, we moved the Personnel Commish, Committee out, so some of the old numbering no longer aligns. There's a reference, and I chuckled as I looked at it online, I think it referred to our authority under Parks and Rec because it had adjusted things. So I was like, ooh, you know, I didn't think to look at that before, but like, like I said, there was something that referred to our ordinance and administrative rules, and I went over it, and it was stuff we took out five, six years ago, but to, to Mr. Perry's point, this hasn't been touched since '09, so there are some misalignments. So, I would, I would like for us to, you know, kind of put this on the back burner and, and read through it with a fine-tooth comb, because, I mean, there's things that you, you saw that I didn't see the first time I read it, so, again, and this is a living document, it's not like we can only use once a year, so I just figure if we, kind of...
I support what you, what you said. I mean, your recollection is very sound.
So you'd like to table it?
I, I just want to give you guys more opportunity to take a peek and, and offer suggestions, because that's a good point, I hadn't thought of the elected side, but I saw Board of Education, and I was like, I think I know what they mean.
So, I, I would be happy to move forward with, the only thing that I just had a question is that it, it is removed from flexibility in terms of work sessions. In the past, there was like, the public could participate at the beginning, in the end, and, like, to me, I like the idea of some flexibility for the chair to permit, and why I say that is because we haven't really been doing much code development lately, but when you're in that phase, it's really nice to have stakeholders. I mean, Mr. Webb is here, you know, he's got his own interests or representative interests, but he's helped us strengthen our code through conversations with him, and so I don't want to have work sessions be such that we can't take advantage of, of that. Maybe we just solve that by inviting stakeholders to be part of the meeting rather than being the public, but however our, you know, however our rules can accommodate that, I just want to leave that ability to have stakeholders contribute to our work sessions in this...
And, and that's a great observation, because I saw that as public comment, because I, if, in a work session, we, we have the right to invite people, so yeah, maybe, maybe we just clarify it, or at least, you know...
At the chair's discretion or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, because I was thinking public comment, because that was the part of, like you said, at the beginning, at the end, you can do this and that.
It's frustrating if it can't be a discourse. It's, that can be really grind things to a hole.
You also don't want someone talking for...
That's true.
A half an hour?
Well, that's true.
And you need to have your own time?
Yeah.
So I think that's where, if you don't have a strong chair, you need some restrictions. If you have a chair that can control the discussion, then maybe you don't. And so they, that's why these things kind of swing back and forth a little bit.
But I think that, that clause is in there that, and at other times at the discretion of the chair, as long as we trust the chair, that's a kind of flexible approach to it rather than trying to legislate.
Sure.
So, I'll entertain a motion to table.
I said it that.
So you, you had said you'd, okay, so, Mr. Bracken with the motion, and Mr. Dana with the second. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion is tabled. And the annexation policy discussion was really just so staff could get, I don't think it's a robust conversation, it's just kind of an update dialogue.
Well, I can give you a five-minute, a 15-minute, or a half an hour, you tell me.
Group of five. If it, if necessary, necessity is more than five, that's fine.
What are our ballot, Mr. Perry?
Why can't you have our?
We still have quorum if he goes to broom ball.
So I've got a really long slide presentation, but I, I may hold off on that. Sounds like you have a variety of interests, whether you want to state or not, but...
Excuse me, but I, I think for interrupting, but it seems to be adequate time ought to be devoted to this. Extremely, extremely important topic, so that it's not as we're wedged in, I don't accuse anyone of wedging it in, but I personally would be uncomfortable if it were wedged in. Do you understand what I'm saying?
To be clear, I prioritize this over broom ball, so if I have to miss broom ball, that is absolutely fine, and I don't want us to cut it down. If you had an intricate slideshow, let's do that.
All right.
Absolutely.
All right.
Quickly.
Now, actually...
All right.
You cut me off whenever you want. So, the reason I bring this up is because it's in the comprehensive plan that we, we consider an annexation policy, although I will say the Ohio Revised Code puts some constraints on what the city can do even with a policy. So, I want to educate you on what we have done in practice, what some concerns might be, kind of under the umbrella that there are some potential annexation requests that may be coming to council. So it's, that's probably why we need to go through this at some point, even if it's quickly. So, the city has been growing and will continue to grow at some, in some fashion, so this is out of the comprehensive plan document, so it just kind of gives you an idea of how the growth has occurred. So this is out of the comprehensive plan as well, this was our study area, so you, you can see the corporate limits, and then there's another line outside of that, which actually corresponds with a utility service area that was in the previous comprehensive plan. And I'll say utilities because oftentimes that is the, the connecting glue where someone, why is someone want to annex, because in our case, we can offer water and sewer services. This is an excerpt out of the comprehensive plan with the statement there at the top saying that we should coordinate with regional jurisdictions and partners to plan for future growth and development. And kind of the inverse of that would be if we let a developer or a property owner plan it for us. And so, maybe that's more of what's been happening in the past. And then the bottom three bullets get into a little bit more detail. Joint land use planning, here we are, annexation policy, we haven't talked about this yet, but adequate public facilities ordinance or considering, you know, should we annex or rezone if there's not a utility even provided for that property? Or should we just leave it alone and let it stay rural? That's what that's about. And then the bottom one would be jurisdictional coordination, that's a whole big topic on its own, with the university and, and the needs of the community. This is the map out of the comprehensive plan, so this is the future land use map, and so you can see that our land uses, our future land use is pretty well contained to the corporate limits, we don't really go outside it with our imagination on what that will be. The 2008 comprehensive plan did show some land use changes outside the corporate limits. We intentionally didn't do that, a whole lot of that this time around. Part of that is because of where we were and what was going on with some of the township discussions regarding trail, police services, that wasn't a good time to really talk about that. And then the zoning map, because the land use map informs what the zoning should be, they're not necessarily the same thing, so this is just our current zoning map. And this is the Oxford Township future land use map from 2015, which is mostly just keeping things the way it is. And you can see that their designations are more rural in nature, there's not any high intensity uses. And then their zoning map does have some other uses on it, other designations, but you can see it's mostly agricultural. There's a little bit of suburban residence and a little bit of higher density residential near the corporate limits. Ohio Revised Code, here is where the restrictions are. The one that Oxford has used the most, which I'll talk about in a minute, is expedited type two, and that's because of, it, it's a shortened time period, and that's the process that milk, that has typically been done. The other ones are more long drawn out processes, and there's opportunity for hearings, which extend the process out. Then there's one where, so these are all where you have 100% agreement with the property owners that are seeking annexation. This top one would be a situation where the territory is not 100% agreement, so we don't, we haven't seen that used here.
The territory is not 100%?
Where the owners, not 100% of the owners, do not agree to the annexation is what the regular annexation is.
Right.
This law was actually updated about 25 years ago because of some of the disagreements around the state, so the legislature decided, let's just make this more predictable and tighten it up. Well, along with that came time limits and things that makes it hard for cities to really plan ahead, so we'll talk a little bit more about that. And that's where this slide is basically the same thing as the previous slide, but I give a little bit more detail here, and I want to just draw your attention to these timelines here, and this is what concerns me the most, is if we, if an annexation petition was filed with 100% of the owners, and it was filed with the county, we would only have 20 days to respond, whether we're going to provide services or not. We would only have 25 days to object. So if we are not in favor of an annexation, it does, or if we're not sure, it doesn't give us much time to decide. And so what some cities do is they'll actually create a policy where they're encouraging a pre-annexation submittal, and so the Planning Commission or City Council can develop a response, and then the owner can submit a petition to the county, that then the city will know already ahead of time what its response is going to be. And so that would, it's not a requirement that, so a city can't mandate that that's done, but it does increase the likelihood that there will be cooperation rather than an adversarial situation if there's a pre-annexation discussion before it's submitted, because once that petition is submitted to the county, there's only 20, the 20-day clock starts. So this slide talks about the sequence, the city manager typically handles this, or one of the staff, and the city manager has typically acted as the agent for the property owners that are requesting annexation. So, that is a way that the city manager has found helps to facilitate the process. The flip side of that could be that the City Council or some other entity may object to the annexation, so it could put the city manager or staff in an awkward position, having the agent acting as also city staff at the same time. We haven't had that issue, but because of our, our economic times right now and our fiscal constraints with some of our general fund issues, we may want to consider recommending to council a different type of process, where the agent is actually the landowner or their own attorney rather than a city staff member. And so this slide just talks about some of the policy stuff, we have the timelines, which is what my concern is, and then just the uniqueness of Oxford being surrounded by a rural area, we're not really getting pressured by other cities, but there is, we, we do have a couple small governments around us that have very limited staff, and so their land use planning capacity is very small. So, when, if we are considering annexations, it's really up to us to decide what the land use plan should be outside our own jurisdiction, which is not something we have a, a strong practice or history of doing. So those are just a couple things to consider. Some of the more detailed things, which is, these are really City Council kind of discussions, are fiscal impact, so we've been talking a little bit about, or a lot actually, about budgeting for fire service, so anytime we expand our area, that expands our, stretches our resources on being able to serve those. And then, jumping down a little bit, we have community needs that we need to balance, and we don't necessarily always know when annexation comes in, how is this going to benefit us? What is the land use for this area? If it has an economic development benefit, that could help our general fund, because there's a tax base increase potentially. If it's going to be a housing project, maybe it addresses a community need. So those are, those are issues that really is good for City Council to weigh those pros and cons. Maybe there's some green space there that needs to be preserved, so maybe it shouldn't be annexed, maybe it's better protected like it is now, those kinds of things. Utility capacity, this is probably the number one reason why we would get an annexation request, because most folks wanting to annex don't want to build their own sewer plant, they don't want to drill their own wells, they want to take advantage of the services that the city can provide. And, but most developers are not necessarily looking for city zoning or other types of restrictions that would make their project would present some obstacles potentially, but those things do go hand in hand. So you get one with the other. Growth management is something that we talked about with the previous comprehensive plan, just in general, and that kind of addresses all of those other things. And then, I've gone through this kind of fast, but I'm not necessarily recommending any particular action, but you may want to have a work session about this, City Council may want to talk about it. If nothing happens, if you decide, or council decides not to make any changes, yeah, council just needs to be aware and commissioned that, of those time constraints, and that there is ability to object, but it might be, based on the new comprehensive plan, if the city manager's acting as the agent or a staff member, it might put staff in an awkward position. So those are the kinds of things that could be considered in our work session.
But minimum, it's a conflict of interest.
Yeah.
A conflict of agency as well, because, you know, as a, as a compensated government staff member, you shouldn't be representing a private entity out of that, that's a whole thing.
It's a misuse of resources unless we have already agreed that this is something we want to bring in.
Yeah.
Well, then there's the bigger picture thing, I mean, Steve Dana was probably the person who pushed for the word growth management in the last plan, and we've never really done it, but the question of having some discretion over when we grow and where we grow is, we don't grow a lot, but even at our scale, we've seen stuff come in that we have trouble surveying because it's far away or leapfrogging. So how much discretion, if we had a policy, would enable us to pull an annexation up to our COA plan and our goals and be able to have some discretion about whether we want it to annex or not?
And, and stipulations around it, right? So you talked about natural areas and how it might be better preserved outside the city, which goes against our values, that if there's something that needs to be preserved, we could hopefully annex it with greater protection rather than a scare for more developers.
So how, what, you know, what would it name, what would it take to have a more proactive policy?
I think the shortest term thing to do could potentially be work with Oxford Township on a joint policy for annexation agreement when there's an annexation request, because that annexation agreement can outline all of those different aspects. Who gets the taxes? Who provides the fire service? Who provides the police service? All those kinds of things, rather than just letting existing policy determine that. And then, when, then each annexation can be considered based on its own merits at that location, rather than letting the blank policy apply regardless of location.
But if, if, for example, the township and the city were in agreement, that this is a sensitive natural area, the township could object to that annexation and we could, like, I mean, how?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be, that would be really nice, if we agreed, this is where we'd like to grow and we agree, and this is where we'd like to not, and then, and then there are mechanisms for not just accepting all annexations just because, I mean, so far it's very applicant, I mean, the city manager's doing it, but it's very land overdriven. They say, I want to annex, and we say, oh, we'll do the paperwork for you, it sounds like. It would be nice if we held it up against what our goals were.
Well, especially now that you're making, or council at least, is, is considering fiscal impacts and overall tax levy issues, and, and so I think there's a little bit more focus on, you know, is the annexation process one way that could benefit our fiscal concerns as well? And if it is, then maybe city manager should be provided a little bit of direction on what the preference is, to consider all of the options when, when a petition's filed. The problem is that...
Most people would, would believe that what you have said is very much a pressing issue. I mean, not, it's not running scared, but there are so many things that could happen that we could direct, that we could affect if we had a plan in place, and if we had various, I can't find the word, but various ways of ranking the importance.
Yes.
Of saying, here are the, here are the most important things. For us not to have a, a session would be, would be sad, because there's so much that we could accomplish, and along the lines that you're saying, I mean, we, we run into situations where we're forced into a decision that we don't want to take. Isn't that true?
It's, it's possible, it could, it could happen. The time that it would take to develop a plan on where to grow, when and how, would probably take longer than when the next annexation petition's going to be filed, because I know of three that are potential ones this year. And so I think having, having a short-term policy in place for, okay, we want to have an agreement with the township, or pursue an agreement with the township before acknowledging that it's, it's a good thing, would be a, a good, a good approach.
Good.
So that I understand the scope of the agreement, is that something that has to sort of, like a comprehensive plan or like a zoning plan delineate every distinct use, or is it something that can just kind of set a time horizon, that's like, we need an agreement in place before this 20-day process starts? What does it allow us to do?
It, it allows more of the taxes, and also the services that are going to be provided, as to who will pay for what and who will do what. It's not really about the land use as much.
And so it, it would apply to all annexations between the township?
No, you could do annexa, individual annexations.
Okay.
But I think to Mr. Dana's point, a, a plan for where could be a separate process that could happen.
Right.
And that would probably take a year or two.
Okay, but it sounds like we needed something in place on an almost emergency basis.
Well, not necessarily the Planning Commission, but City Council.
City Council needs something in place soon that look, that basically delineates the process a little bit more clearly in a proactive way.
Well, so, so three quick things. To your point, we've talked about an approved annexation, so I think there's also some ambiguity or unclear who does what from a city level, because ultimately, yeah, City Council has to, you know, say that, but a lot of discussions happen here. The second point, and these are all completely unrelated, the second point, what Dr. Prithridge said is, you know, the land use and where we go, if you go east of town to the township border, we have undeveloped property past the woods and all that that is part of the city, so that's a future, whereas Owl's Landing was more of a technicality of capturing, you know, an enclave, so I mean, we have kind of different, not theories, but application. One is like, sure, we'll annex that, and, oh, we'll build something there someday, and we'll put pipes in the ground someday. Well, that's forethought. The other ones have really been reactive. I will look for the information, the third, third thing I wanted to address, and, and I don't agree with it, because I think there's some serious flaws in it, but in Iowa City, North Liberty, Coralville, and Iowa City were all coming together at the same part on North Dubuque, and they actually came up with an intercomamental agreement of who could go to where, and this was the land expansion for Coralville, and North Liberty had the right to here, and, and a lot of it, again, you know, you're talking city boundaries, but it was, North Liberty Water could handle up to here, Coralville could do this, and Coralville, to your point about planning, if we are going to be intentional and say, I'm thinking of College Corner Pike as kind of this offshoot, well, okay, if we're going to have to plan a second water treatment or a second fire station, like, we're intentionally going this way or that way, so...
Yeah.
I'll see if we can find the one on Coral, on Johnson County.
It's the intentionality, and particularly in those areas where the township and the city abut each other, so they're a very sensitive, sensitive area, whether it's green space or whether it's some kind of development, and it's not to try to deprive any of, any rights, on the contrary, they come out stronger. They come out, they go stronger if they plan together. And there, I think there can be incentives for people to do that. Incentives can be created to say, if you help create a regional mini-plan, this is, these are the, these are the salutary benefits that will flow from that. These are the benefits that you'll find, and you have to identify the benefits, but they're there.
So, I guess I would, I, I like the idea of, I mean, I think you can have the procedural part that maybe later is informed by a plan, you know? But we've got a lot of educated people who are familiar with their circumstances, you can have a good, informed conversation among staff and the township. I would say, I, as, as the Planning Commission, as the kind of keeper of the plan, I would love if annexations were upon recommendation of the Planning Commission. I mean, I don't know if it's possible that build that into the process, but as the people who are thinking about all this stuff, I think that, right now, it's kind of the staff initiates it and presents it to council, and, and then we'll deal with what comes down the pike. If it were deliberate enough that it could include a planning recommendation to council, I, I think that would be, I just, I know we would get more deliberative decisions out of it, whether it's as expeditious as the way it's been.
It also would be a potential home for the, the pre-congressional...
Yeah.
So, I agree completely with what you said, so, one, it, also it makes sense that it would come through us first, I mean, that is...
We're the planning.
What we do. That might be more than anything else, where we might be useful. But also, we were sort of having trouble delineating between the procedural structure, the management planning, but also management planning with township.
Right.
Right? Because we can make our own plans about what we want, but then we'll have to hord made pass that, but if we have a structure in place, it would both address how we do that together going forward, but also any issues that come up immediately.
Precisely, good.
Well, this was discussion, so there's no vote needed. Do you have some clarity?
Yeah, I'll discuss with the SIG manager.
Okay. Another thing too, and, and this is just, this is 100% my opinion, but it has to go on the annexation, I mean, there are things happening at the county level or through county rural approvals that are smack dab right next to our city limits, and, you know, I shared with Sam and Zach that, you know, it's kind of that backwards process of, you, you guys have heard me during, you know, gosh, what was the whistle stop property, where they were like, we want to rezone this so we can do this, and I'm like, rezoning is independent. I know you know what you want to do with it, but the minute that goes general business, they can put, you know, whatever they want there. So, so I think getting the cart and horse in the right order, so that if somebody does want to come and say, hey, I've got this parcel that touches your property, so before I just go backwards through a process and expect you to hook up a water pipe, how about we talk about this? So, I, I think whatever we can do to help you, I know, well, obviously you've heard it, we, we'd like to have a little more strategery in how we're handling this as opposed to reacting all the time.
Yes, yes.
And yes, I did quote George Bush. All right, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
You have it.
And he, he's on it today. Mr. Dana with the motion. Who wants to second? Mr. Bracken with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, we are adjourned.